There we go.
Can't hear you.
The Board of Education is calling for a budget hearing this will be on 23/24 against Town of Water Town. The Town Council of Town of Water Town will hold the vote by the vote hearing on Wednesday, April 26, 2023 at 7:00 PM at Water Town High School Street, 222 French Street, Water Town. If your comments on the House proposal this will be on 23/24 coming from the Senate by then. Town General Fund, $30,643,801. School General Fund, $52,157,69. For total General Funds, $88,788,832. Town Row 8, $352,824. Water Operations, $2146,330. Water Capital, $395,000. Silver Operations, $2576,320. Silver Capital, $265,000. Water Run Silver Debt, $426,490. President of Dog Operation, $809,477. Local Capital Improvement, $157,719. The meeting will be conducted in person and available via Zoom and voice call. Only to the Zoom meeting will be placed on the Town website under the December meeting on April 26, 2023. Anyone who should present a testimony may just send a variety of files to the hearing by emailing watertowncouncil@watertowncda.org or with the budget to the hearing on the subject matter Friday, April 1, 2023, or by email to the Water Town Town Council, Water Town Town Office, the Water Town Council. Those attending in person to public hearing locations have a special right to the physical experience. If you require a translator or a pronunciation or a hidden appearance or other... The town is not yet the Town of Water Town, but it is still in quarter five, 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 five. It's stated that Water Town is getting a dynamic, paid vehicles from the Town's bridge, general areas, Germans, Water Town Council.
Thank you. I just want to remind anyone that does not have a copy of the budget, you do have extra copies up front, and also you guys can silence yourself until the next speaker's presentation. Mark, for anyone who...
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Chairman. The proposal for a budget increase to support schools and town services is a holistic approach which address the challenges faced by our municipality. This evening, there will be much needed communication to understand the current position of the Water Town stability and in turn guide both the Town and the Board of Education Administration on how to get the town forward. The proposed decrease recognizes the connectedness of education and essential services and aims to provide much needed funds for both areas. The proposed budget at the Town side will support essential services such as police and fire departments, infrastructure maintenance, and expanded quality of life services. This will improve response times, maintain roads and bridges, and ensure that health and safety are our business. And on the Board of Education side, the proposed budget will put them to begin systematically addressing growing special education costs and much needed programs. To stabilize this community and promote growth, it is essential to consider various factors such as the global economy, infrastructure, access to quality education, safety and security, and quality of life. For example, a strongly diverse global economy provides stable employment opportunities and leads to increased investment in local businesses. In addition, a well-maintained and reliable infrastructure system is essential for a stable and growing community, including reliable public transportation, food and road networks, access to clean water and sanitation, and environmental electricity. In 2023, Water Town is a stable town with a robust infrastructure and talented staff. However, the Town must continue to invest in its infrastructure to ensure that it remains competitive and attractive to residents and businesses. Economic development is a crucial factor to the Town's success, and the Council should continue to prioritize strategies to promote growth and attract customers. With strong schools and a strong economic outlook, we in turn make a very strong community. The Town is aggressively pursuing grant opportunities, further invest in our infrastructure without directly burdening our citizens. In 2022 and 2023, the Town has secured seven million dollars in grant funds that have directly impacted our infrastructure. However, this pursuit of funds does benefit the Town a lot of the daily responsibilities employees take part in the grant area. Our Board of Education partners simply continue to advocate the state's effective change in the legislative world. In 2022, the Town has accrued funds, which is an amount of approximately $19 million. These funds will directly invest in our school, fire, and road infrastructure. Although the fire relief in this town package is earmarked for road infrastructure maintenance and improvement, it needs to be noted that the Town will need to invest approximately $3 million per year for the next 10 years to bring the condition of road uses to state average. The bond package has minimally affected our debt service and minimally affects this budget decrease. Economic development should continue to be a top priority for the Council, tax incentives, streamlining spending processes, and this outreach to help attract visitors and promote growth in our visiting businesses. This year, a massive over approximately $2.4 million increase on the Town budget, a significant portion of this increase, approximately $800,000 due to employee wages deficits. While this overall increase presents a challenge, it does represent a fair and equitable increase of staff and address infrastructure maintenance that is the aim. Employees are consistently asked to do more than us. Additionally, it should be noted that over the years, combined with plans that have eliminated workforce and seven contributions, shared medical costs have increased significantly and have had a positive impact over time. Any opportunity that presents itself for approval deficiency and or elimination of a staff decision should be looked at and continue to do so. Within the last two years, we reduced staff in the building department by eliminating the department and adding the shared services of the Town of Thompson, resulting in a net decrease in the department. Additional staffing levels are reevaluating to allow other responsible staff levels reductions. As the Police Chief discusses his budget tonight, he will address increasing the annual control of it, however, we are also making the basis of the Town of Thompson to offset that sickness. This month, the Town Council is currently telling the senior audience of audio departments to review efficiency of the Town of Markets, Board of Education, to explore areas of shared services, staffing level corporativeness, and senior efficiencies. Some departments will be increased budgets. My apologies. Better? Okay. Do you want me to start over? No, I'm just kidding. Some departments with increased budgets include our public buildings, our police department, our IT information technology, public works, and senior center. For our public buildings, the needed infrastructure repair improvements are very much needed at this time. In our IT budget, cybersecurity mandates require us to increase that budget, and we're taking on server upgrades to support new software that helps us mitigate increasing in staff. And finally, senior programs and senior tax incentives will be necessary for the Council to consider so that our growing demographic of seniors is not forced to choose between budget support and personal financial stability. The exploration of increased senior tax incentives can help alleviate financial burdens on older individuals who may be on a fixed income or facing high healthcare costs. These incentives can come in tax breaks, deductions, or freezes, and can help seniors save money for expenses like home renovations and or property tax reduction. Overall, senior tax incentives can help improve the quality of life of older individuals and provide a valuable source of support as they age. With the right approach to balancing needs, the Town could create a vibrant local economy that benefits everybody. I look forward to the public's input as we move through the budget hearing and after the Board of Education's presence, I will have our departments present their comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Miller Blain of Super Junior Schools.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a quick presentation on my work. All right, well, good evening and thank you, everyone, for coming to tonight's public hearing. I'm happy to be able to present to you some detailed information about our FY24 Board of Education budget tonight and where it stands at the moment. First, I would like to thank very much all of our Board of Education members for their continued diligence, their support, and openness to varying training conversations, their transparency and collaboration with all the partners that help the Water Town help the schools, even the RAL to make today. In addition, I'd also like to thank our Town Council members, our Water Town Department leaders and staff, as well as our Greater Water Town community partners and neighbors, and all of our Water Town families and students and our administrative teams and faculty. It takes everybody to make a school district run, and I think for everyone just being part of that journey. The budget process, for those of you who are interested in a more detailed overlook at each item, is posted on our main website, and so I do encourage you to go to our main website, and you can download any documents in addition to the entire full budget book that has all of our materials in there if you would be closer look. As with each of our budget presentations distributed and introduced with our themes as well as our mission statement, we truly do believe that in every child, in every classroom, and every day, we can give and provide a world-class education here in Water Town. We anchor ourselves in the themes of alignment, innovation, and authenticity because that's how we get to the world of education every day. Tonight's presentation, however, is going to look a little deeper at our current landscape financially and our major budget drivers. Again, if you're looking for that high level overview, please do take a look at our website and see if we're able to get a little detail about. The current landscape is something that I started to introduce last year in the FY23 budget presentation, and you might recognize this image if you were here then, but it's the image of a tipping ball. It basically is our fiscal L.O.L. tipping over hill. Last year, it was a moment that spelled out a very increasing and quick approach to a tipping point that was directly related to rapidly increasing special education costs. Now, I shared in FY23 last year that the following year, which we are living in right now, our special education costs would very quickly exceed our ability to take from other departments and to tighten the belt in other areas to be able to cover those costs. Now, last year, we were able to cover our budget and balancing because we received $1.28 million in our SO American Relief Fund from the COVID pandemic. You're right that, as you know, we have, as Board of Education, quite a large appropriation to balance our budget. That again was in need because of the pandemic as well as extremely rising special education costs. When I look back historically in Water City, special education costs have continually risen over the last 10 to 15 years, but at some point, we reached a tipping point, and a hugely hard district to reach that tipping point based on what I observed in the short period here a few years ago. However, we've been able to piece it together with funding and grants, and we've been able to cover, for lack of better words, and where we stand at this point is very, very important because without changing the way we think about our Board of Education budget moving forward, the rate of speed at which our special education costs will grow quickly and exceed our ability to address any growing needs and demands. So let's move into this next graph here, a couple of my previous last year. This is our special education prevalence line and projection. You can see that that top red line continues to grow upwards while we use a necessity to our building and try to keep our municipal budget as reasonable as possible. You can see that the middle shaded portion continues to widen, and every time that middle portion continues to widen, it starts to become less possible to cover. So it's very much my duty as superintendent of schools to take very realistic and transparent looks to acknowledge the state of certain departments in our school district. It's not only necessary for me, but absolutely required for me to do this in order to plan for the future and to mitigate any ongoing risks. And ultimately, the goal here is to balance the budget each year. Simultaneously, however, we are trying to create incremental movement towards increasing our education experience for our students and families in our district. We cannot stay safe. And so when I look to our historical budget, it's very important that I take a look to see if any patterns are emerging, and I must determine how to mitigate those risks, to stop a practice altogether, perhaps implement steps towards a plan that will change the mode that we are running, more than incrementally, sometimes drastically, and then communicate the reasoning, adjusted expectations, and how it's going to keep our organization from a potential downward spiral that cannot be controlled. And all the while, I have to communicate that sensitivity without causing absolute competition among us. So in short, it's always better to catch a situation sooner than later, and so attention because nobody wants to be blinded completely, including me. And being able to move forward with viable possible solutions for the strong sense of urgency is the support to how we can move forward. I do want to give a little landscape of the education cost sharing fund. Over the past 15 years, federal and state funding for education has plateaued. You can see the red dotted line there. Special education funding has either deagreed or modestly increased or plateaued altogether. However, you see that the blue dotted line there, per pupil cost, how much it costs to educate a child in the immediate, continues to rise. And so as legislation changes over time, more emphasis is often placed on our school district municipalities to provide what is needed for students to succeed in varying situations essentially. We must, however, remember, as a Board of Education and as a community that serves our families and our children, that education is here to care, to educate, and to take care of the children of our community. Last year's original really funding, as I just mentioned, was the real example of how school districts truly needed funding to provide the support services that our students require. That being said, with the last year's $1.28 million federal government funding, the special education cost alone would have tipped the ball over rapidly at the start of the year, and we would have had, we would not have been able to balance that budget at the end of last fiscal year. We do receive grants, both state and federal. However, if you look to that second last column, you can see that the percentage increases are very modest, either by toll or you see increases that are between 0 and 1.5% globally behind what the actual means are on the school district. In addition to this table, you can see that similar school districts in our district reference group all have very much elevated percentage increases. We are all experiencing similar situations in our district. And so with our recommended reduction from our Town Council, our current proposed budget was $53,957,600. With the $800,000 reduction, it would take us to an increase of 6.2%, which is an increase of $3,107,629. With that, our pie continues to show that our largest expenditure is in salaries and benefits. 75.14% of our budget still belongs to our people, and that is because human capital is what drives our education system here in Water Town. The education that we provide our students is built on relationships, is built on the experience that we have in our classrooms, and how our teachers make that sacred place where our children attend every single day the best that they possibly would be. In order to get to $800,000 recommendation, I am going to underneath that with essentially a little cut in white strong strokes, $600,000 from salaries, and another $200,000 can be called other category, which would essentially have been looking closely at analytics to see where are we able to take off caps, monet play, and potentially a very close look at our freshman offerings. I would only get to this point if I needed to and if there were reasons that I needed to get to that area. I would also like to just remind the general public and our community that even to arrive to our proposed percentage of 7.81% increase, we had multiple reductions to be able to get there. Now, this is only a limited, you can see the bottom of this one is a lot, but we made reductions in our administrative union, we also made a number of reductions across board of education lines as well as in the new special education. What was there, however, was a concerted decision to keep building requests for supplies and materials, all as our buildings are coming out of two years of a budget raise that have started in the first one and a half months of school. It is difficult to not be constant if we have to always be in a freeze. And so making sure that we're able to move forward with those budget requests, taking out other ones to be able to get us to a reasonable number was how we got to our number. And so to cut it even further, it does require us to go beyond that. You also saw, as I've been presenting our way on town, we do have certain additions and restorations in the budget. These restorations and additions, although the red ones that are struck at this point now will ultimately help us reduce down further, are specific to special education so that we can start to think and relook at how we provide service and think financially about one of our largest financial viewpoints, but an important one that we care very much There is a very clear commitment for me as the superintendent of schools to attempt to very reliably steer the district in a balanced and consistent manner, and one of those major commitments is to formulate a plan for the future and to study our district one step at a time and to study our shape. When you think about our investments, we must not stay stagnant in our district, and I know I've said that many, many times, we must be able to afford. And so there's a very clear balance between being able to cover costs and also being able to very carefully prioritize our needs in order to see all education experience as well for all children. Our investments that you see are specific to technology and curriculum and facilities, which are sort of been left to the wayside. At some point, time runs out, things become antiquated, and the world of technology thinks it's not obsolete, and the world of curriculum thinks it must be renewed. These are areas that both need to be cared and must be updated, and so I've made a determination that the priority must be made to make that happen. In addition, as I mentioned, those additions to the special education position, that is a huge investment being made in the special education to attempt to change that role so that we can become more sustainable as a school district. That doesn't happen in one year, it's happening in one year. Class enrollment is also very, very important to our education experience here in Water Town. Enrollment is something that we've also found that is very true here because we know that the research and the experience in the classroom, when you have reasonable class sizes, is the best environment for children to learn with their highly qualified educators. So I bring this back to this tipping ball because it's important that I talk a little bit about patterns, and that means that part of my job is also to look at the close oversight of the budget and also our operations on a daily, daily basis. And when patterns begin to emerge, I must look at them and ask questions to determine what the patterns are telling us. And ultimately, we have to decide whether it's just coincidence, a one-time phenomenon, or perhaps a start to a longer, wider situation that's going to impact the overall health of our organization. Even if the solution is not entirely clear as again, what is true is that adjustment and change must occur. If positive situations are happening, then I try to figure out how do we seal this up? How do we replicate this? If negative things are happening, we got to figure out how to stop it and figure out different ways to approach what we've been doing for a long time. I do also contribute a huge shadow to our faculty, to our administrators, and staff. I am so proud of their vision, of all that they've accomplished. Sometimes we have to pull their creativity more than we want to every single day just to make things work, and we always do that, we always step up to that, to that play. There isn't anything exciting, but it's a journey ahead of us. The effort to be part of a budget that I presented to you is the start of a major plan that will essentially be part of a key opening on to a sustainable model for our district. There is some risks involved in this, however, because we plan, and so we will verify our great efforts and so that every project will be built up. It does take great, great effort because we are attempting to redefine how a very rapidly growing, very required specialization is going to affect our budget cycle for years to come. Now, we typically look at our budget annually, but in order to do what I intend to propose to do, we have to look at this as a journey over multi-year phase. It's necessary to fully understand exactly where our endpoints are in the budget, and for a finite period of time, we have to get away from just a coverage problem and figure out how we can rethink what we are doing. But we must also remember that according to special education law, a school district is required to provide that free and appropriate level of education. We are proud to provide that service to our families. And to take this from a student's perspective, to say simply, children come to school to go to school and learn. They don't really come to school to degrade our budget, and so it's up to us, our leaders of the district and as the directors, to think of it in order to make this complex problem much more sustainable. So this is actually a very powerful image, I'll use some definition here. There's an analogy here. You see a gigantic expert. What you can actually see from the waterline upward is scaly rain. Typically, if you were to see ice river first, I think you would be on, but what's to be rewarding is that below the water, an iceberg is even two, three, 10 times larger than what you see above. I use this as an analogy of how we will start to embark on this great effort of trying to rethink what this multi-phase journey is going to look like, to rethink and reimagine how we provide services and financially sustain ourselves as we move forward. There are big starting points. What I do know that in order to increase sustainability, we must require transformation, and although again, the exact solution isn't clear just yet, at the same time, there are some steps that we need to start to do in there. One, specific personnel placement. We have highly qualified expert people in our district, and so being able to put them in the right spots at the right time at this point to help us put our human capital in the right places to start to rethink and helping provide services. Secondly, we have to make sure that we build a solid program, not just one, but many across our continuum so that we can provide services to every single student in our district. Not wishy-washy programming, but solid programming so that our students receive what they need. Number three, it is absolutely necessary that we be as transparent as possible with all stakeholders. That means that we need to have regular meeting updates on all phases of our program development, whether it's good, bad, ugly, or what needs to be settled, and we know that we're on a journey and we just need to be very transparent on where we are. There also has to be a very thorough understanding of the cost-benefit analysis of what we're trying to do. There are times as we go through this journey that there are when we reach a sum zero, meaning there is no reduction, there's no increase, we are just flat. However, perhaps operations have changed. There are also times where we may see a reduction, and then that's when we can have a small party and celebration. And then there are times where we may see increases and we just have to figure out why that's happening. To that point, there has to be commitment to a multi-year phase look at budgeting and program development, and that takes effort, and that takes time. And lastly, dedication to move forward and avoid latency at all times at all costs. So when you think about program development, if it doesn't happen just a year, and we when you think about dedication, because that means we have to be dedicated more than again, we are here. We are at a point where we really need to move forward together as a team, as a community, as a whole. Because at this point, because of how history has played itself out, we need to think carefully how we go forward and how we do at some point not have to keep thinking pants to fill a hole. And that's the way that we don't have been standing in, we avoid that, and we move forward. So I must affirm, we are ultimately in the business of teaching and learning, and in order to do this, we will of course dedicate ourselves to implementing the maximum education, making sure that we cultivate a fair and high-quality working environment for our educators and our employees. And three, we are beholden to many things requiring some aid from state and the federal government that we will do. And last but not least of all, we do this all within service of our families and our students. And so, again, with the reduction, we do come down to a six point two percent increase, but I do ask that our town councils and our community, by the time of referendum, do take us to our fully funded request of seventy point one percent increase, and then fully fund us at three million nine hundred seven thousand six twenty-nine for this year, as we embark on this very multi-year journey to try and become more sustainably financially profitable. This will be the end of the result. Thank you very much.
I'd like to introduce our police chief, Josh Berbner, who will give us a overview
Yes, terrific. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, fellow citizens. I'm privileged to stand before you this evening to provide an overview of the proposed budget for the Aurora Water Town Police Department.
On behalf of the men and women of the Watertown Police Department, I want to express my sincere gratitude to town manager, members of the town council, and to this community for the high level of support that the Watertown Police Department receives. It really is absolutely outstanding. While many police departments across our country were receiving backlash after the unfortunate events that occurred in 2020, the town of Watertown, the community of Watertown and Oakville really came out and showed a strong support for our Watertown Police Department. And we really, really appreciate the partnership we have with this community. Terrific, thank you very much. The budget that is before you this evening shows a fairly significant increase of about nine percent. The reason that increase is so large in one single year was the extended amount of time that labor relations took to negotiate a successor agreement for the police union's contract. So the salaries, wages, benefits, and other contractual benefits that our police union has, you're seeing that increase here of two years' time in one budget. So I'll explain that more as we go into this. The police department's overall budget consists of six separate budgets. I'm going to start at the bottom of this slide and work, work the way up so that it is fully explained. The bar graph on the very bottom here is the administrative budget. The administrative budget of the police department covers the salaries of not only the chief and deputy chief, but of our civilian administrative personnel as well, including our executive assistant and our records clerks. The rest of the funds that are in the administrative budget cover many of the contractual, the contract and maintenance agreements we have with vendors, software subscriptions, et cetera, that actually takes the administrative fund of the police department. The next lineup is our, called the patrol detective budget, as you can see by the bar graph, makes up a lion's share of the police department's overall budget. This budget includes the wages, salaries, and benefits for our thirty-eight members of the police union, and as well as a lot of the actual operating costs for equipment for the police department. And you can also see, just by looking at that bar graph, the largest increase in our budget did occur in that particular budget due to the recent settlement of the police union contract. The next one up there is called our maintenance and support budget, a fairly small budget overall in comparison to the previous two. And that budget houses many of our other contracts that we have for things, for different items of the police department, including vehicle purchase and things along that line. The next line item up there, if you really can't barely even see because it's such a small line item, is called our traffic budget. And this primarily covers the costs associated with all of the electricity for all of the traffic signals that we have in the town. Even though the state of Connecticut owns the traffic signals, the town of Watertown is responsible for paying the electrical costs to run all the traffic signals in the town. Next up is our animal control budget, also a relatively small budget. We do have two animal control officers, their salaries are included here, as well as the operating expenses to run our animal control divisions. And the last bar graph on, on the top is for the overall, is our communications budget that funds all of our dispatchers. We have currently six full-time dispatchers and five part-time dispatchers. Their salaries and benefits are included in this line item, as well as the bulk costs that actually fund our communication center, including contracts with radio vendors, et cetera. The overall budget for the police department in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three that we're currently in was set at five million eight hundred forty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. The proposed budget going before you is an increase to six million two hundred ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Then the next slide will show you where those increases are coming from. So this pie chart shows you that the total increase is three hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. Of that amount, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and two, as you can see in the orange slice of the pie here, is coming from that patrol detective budget. And the vast majority of the funds there were all due to wage and benefit increases negotiated in the police union's contract. And keep in mind, that wasn't a one-year increase, that is showing two consecutive years of increases all at once, because as of the budget setting set for last year, the contract had not yet been settled. The next largest piece of pie is the purple, and that is the administrative budget, increasing by just over thirty-eight thousand dollars. I'll go into what those wages cost drivers are in a moment. The green slice is communications, all about thirty-four thousand five hundred dollar increase. The blue slice of the pie is the animal control budget of about twenty-one thousand dollars, and there were minimal increases in the other two budgets. Regarding the overall cost drivers, starting with our administrative budget, which did go up thirty-eight thousand dollars, that's primarily due to a new contract that got negotiated with our body camera provider, we use a company called Axon to provide our body cameras, and we're not only, we signed a five-year contract with them to provide body cameras for the Watertown Police Department, as well as all the video retention storage and access for the next five years. That will also include all new dash cameras for our entire fleet of vehicles, as well as new recording equipment for our interrogation room in the detective bureau. All of this equipment is now required by Connecticut statute. The patrol detective budget, which went up two hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and two dollars, again, I reiterate, this reflects two years of negotiated pay wages for police personnel, as well as other benefits negotiated in the police union contract. It also includes one additional police officer position. My initial proposal included three additional police officer positions. Town manager's recommended, recommended budget went forth with two positions, and with a two hundred thousand dollar cut, an additional, that one additional position was also covering this down to one additional police officer. Right now, your sworn force here in Watertown is authorized at forty police officers, that includes the chief and the deputy chief. Out of that forty, and keep in mind, we're a twenty-four-hour, day, seven-day-a-week operation, which requires three shifts to work around the clock. We have three lieutenants, one that's in charge of each of the divisions of the police department, one who would patrol, another investigation, and another professional standards. We have seven sergeants, six of them directly assigned to supervise our patrol shifts, two are assigned to each patrol shift, because again, due to a staggered schedule, it takes two sergeants on a single shift to cover seven days a week. We also have a sergeant assigned to a position called support services, which wears just about every other hat you can imagine in the police department, managing equipment with pyramid, managing the fleet, managing house and grounds, as well as many other duties that the chief, myself and the deputy chief assign. We have five detectives that work our serious investigations, from sex assaults to homicides, burglaries, to the ever-increasing amount of fraud and identity theft. These are detailed investigations that take significant amount of time and are inappropriate for patrol officer whose duties are to respond to calls from service, spend that type of time investigating these cases, which often brings a detective out of the town of Watertown. That, that leaves just twenty-three officers, if you're doing the math, left to actually work patrol. Of those twenty-three, two are assigned to our schools as school resource officers, that brings us down to twenty-one. If you're doing, continuing to do the math, we'd be lucky if we are fully staffed and have everybody fully working and on the road to be able to assign seven officers to each of our shifts, the day shift, the evening shift, and the night shift. And when you further stretch that out over a seven-day period, that only puts three to four officers on the road at any given time in the town of Watertown. That's not a lot, and it really should be more. Based on FBI statistics, towns our size, in this region of the country, generally have about one point eight officers per thousand people. We're at one point six, so we are under the mark. I'd love to see this organization be up to about forty-six officers. I know that can't be done overnight, but it's time we do start incrementally getting the proper amount of officers on the road to prevent burnout, sustain officer wellness, and to be able to address citizen concerns in this community, particularly traffic issues, which are the number one complaint that comes into the Watertown Police Department regarding speeding, particularly on neighborhood streets and cut through roadways. And when we only have three or four officers working out on the road, the vast amount of their time is spent going service calls and unable to dedicate them to assignments such as radar, stop sign enforcement, traffic signal enforcement, et cetera. So I would certainly appreciate the community's support in increasing our course, over the course for the next few budgets. Again, right now, you are, we only do have one additional police officer in our budget. The maintenance support budget went up only by about six thousand dollars. The primary cost drivers here, this is where we pay to keep our police fleet in good working order. Our fleet is starting to slightly age, so the costs for repairs have been going steadily up, as well as our radio network has aged significantly, and the repairs that we are putting into our radio network to keep it viable right now have been going up. Fortunately, thanks to Congresswoman Johanna Hayes, we have applied for and received a three point three seven five million dollar grant to completely repress our radio network, but this will take time to actually plan out the project and implement it. So we're well over a year out from seeing the new radio network in place, so we will continue to have to keep our current radio network going. Our traffic budget, this is our very small, less than one thousand dollar increase, and that's just as you know with your home electrical bill, rates have started to soar, as they have for the towns, and we had to increase the budget here just to pay for the electricity for the traffic signal in the town. Our animal control budget, see the twenty-one thousand dollar increase in the animal control budget. Historically, we have employed one full-time animal control officer and one part-time animal control officer at twenty hours. We are proposing in this next year, primarily as a succession plan for the future, to bring our part-time officer up to full-time, full-time pay. And as the town manager did mention earlier, this is likely, this cost is likely going to be offset by a shared services agreement with the neighboring community. Our communication budget did go up by about thirty-five thousand dollars. In this budget, I am proposing to do a slight shift in the way we stack our communications department. We currently have six full-time dispatchers and five part-time dispatchers. Of those six full-time dispatchers, one of them serves as a supervisor and has very limited time on the desk actually dispatching, and a lot of her time is spent doing administrative work for the dispatch center. That has us relying heavily on part-time staff, filled many gaps in the schedule, and it is becoming increasingly difficult to hire, train, and retain part-time dispatch staff, having people come in who, we tell them, you're going to be working twenty to thirty hours a week, and it's all going to be nights, weekends, holidays, doesn't make it a very attractive position. I am proposing that we increase our full-time staff to seven and reduce our part-time staff. That will allow particularly the midnight shift to be fully staffed only by full-time employees and not have to rely on part-time employees for those open shifts. And part-time employees will be used to go with baby seats on the day shift and the evening shift, which will make it much easier to hire, train, and retain that part-time staff. That, at this time, does conclude my presentation, and we're here for any questions later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Next, I'd like to introduce Jerry Lucowski, who is our Director of Public Works and Water and Sewer Superintendent. He will present briefly both of them.
Good evening, good everybody here. All right, first of all, I'd like to start like the chief said, with my transition as the new public works director, this is my sixth month on the job, and also I took on water and sewer four months ago. There's one month I don't remember, it's that first month with water and sewer, the month of January, but everything just flew by. But I'd like to thank you for attending, and also thanking my staff for the great work they do out in the field, and also the town manager with his leadership, the town council, and also the public works subcommittee who's helped me with some of that history that we have here in the town. And also the new board I deal with is the water and sewer approach. So these are the departments underneath the public works. The top six have six fund sites, one hundred and thirty-seven line items in the budget. In the bottom one, water and sewer, has fourteen fund sites and two hundred and twelve line items that we have. The first one I'm going to touch on is the top six. So first of all, infrastructure preservation and improvements. The value The value of what we have in our infrastructure is somewhere between $500 million and $1 billion that we have. Just like the Iceberg, so the top of Iceberg, you see the roads, you see the catch basins, you see the curves, the water tanks and the manhole covers. What you don't see is the drainage structures, the stormwater pipe, the water pipe, the sewage pipe, the pump stations, they kind of get hidden within the neighborhoods, and also many valves that we do have. With the infrastructure, and I love fixing the infrastructure, I, you know, it's a challenge, but unfortunately, it does take funding to fix what we have in the ground. Second thing I'd like to talk about is personnel. Like I said, we have a great team, but the one thing that we want to do is for leadership training, and also the specialty training that we have in the highways for our Roadmaster programs, and with the solid waste, we have to pay classes with the D E P. And for Water and Sewer, there's a ton of classes to keep our certification for our water distribution and wastewater collection licenses. So, that's one of the goals that we have in the shop. The third thing is the pavement management program. We had a study done by Beta, an outside consultant, and unfortunately, we received a bad grade. It's an F. It's a 61. And we need $45 million to fix our roads. That's to get it to an A+. That's not realistic for the taxpayers. Our goal is to get it to the state average, which is a 72, or a C-. And that's where we're looking at $3 million a year, just to bring it to that C-. And every year we're going at it, we're losing life of the roads at the same time. Each day, we receive about a half dozen complaints about potholes in the town. So, we're on top of it, but we do need funding to fix these issues. In highways, one of our themes is more maintenance and less construction. We've done some great projects, Unico Dog Park, the Police Range, the Animal Control Parking Lot, then recently, at the top of Echo Lake Road, you see the work we're doing at the corner. But we have to slow that down and worry more about maintenance. With our budget in highways over the past 10 years has been at 2.25 million. We've been flat on it. In fact, it's actually reversed, because every time we take a pay raise, and with inflation, and you can tell the cost of materials go to the gas pumps, well, most of our materials is fuel-related on what we do. So, we probably took a 40% to 50% pay cut over the past 10 years, and we should be around 3.4 to 3.6 million just in highways. And you can see it in our roads and what we maintain. The other part is, we want to reorganize for efficiency or do a transformation, which is no additional employees. It's from within, a foreman, a mechanic, equipment operator, and a grant writer. So, once again, no additional full-time equivalents, but just improvement so I can have, we can have a third team out in the field. We can have a mechanic that could look at other vehicles besides highways. We want to look at the rest of the town vehicles and maintain them at this time, besides police and fire, but possibly in the future. But at this time, our entire town fleet runs police and fire. Then, the last thing I'd like to talk about on this slide is the future of the Highway Garage. I know it's probably a five- or 10-year journey that will take, but over half of our vehicles are stored outside. Our vehicles cost anywhere from $100,000 to a quarter million. In fact, our biggest vehicle, our back truck, is a half million dollars in cash to fit it in the garage. So, it's a big deal. And what I lose sleep at overnight is we don't have fire suppression inside of our garage. So, with the Nike Ford in store, we jammed 19 trucks with sand and saw and snow plows on the front of them. And if anything happens with the tightly packed, it's our entire fleet that saws over it. And that took fire code in the 1950s when it was built, so it does need all of our inspections, but we don't have that fire suppression to give our safety. Like I said, it's probably a five- or 10-year journey to find the property and hopefully get it constructed. Some of the good news is shovel in the ground. Our pavement management plan, that's the $45 million. We received $5 million in town bonding. Thank you very much. It was the highest of the four referendums, at 71% for yes, take care of our roads. But with that, it's going to be done over three years, because we don't want to hit the debt ceiling within the town. We also received $1.5 million in ARPA funding. That's going to go to the improvements of our pavement management program. Hungerford Ave Reconstruction, it's ongoing. We started it last year. Wilson Street Bridge, that has started. The bridge will be closed down temporarily from June until December, while we put the new bridge in there. That's a 50/50 project, so we're getting 50% from the state government. Guernsey Town Road is out to bid. That's 3-plus million dollars, 100% from the state, so it's good news. We should have bid openings within the early part of May. Sprucewood Drainage, it was a drainage right-of-way that's been awarded. And ADA, so it's Americans with the Visibility Act, at 170 locations throughout the town. And that's also another 3-plus-million-dollar project, that we're about 85% done with the design and going out to bid. The biggest thing that the Town Manager comes down to my office about every other day is Main Street safety improvements. So, it is a priority. We do have multiple locations in Oakville and Watertown to take care of, not only safety, but to also help with the traffic flow on Main Street. And the last thing, it's kind of like a, you know, as a kid growing up, I loved drainage. I loved looking at when it rained. But we have 19-plus locations with drainage problems in the town, and we have 60 detention basins that we have to maintain. You probably don't see them, because they're totally overgrown, and this will help us when it, during the heavy storms, for stormwater or flood. Some of the good news is with the mild winter, we were able to fix Boren Street, Belvin Street, and Sprucewood Road this past winter. Just to touch on getting into the operating budget, I have some pretty simple slides. These are just the major increases that we have within the budget. One is a grant writer. It's a pretty big deal for us. Last week, we received a $300,000 grant for the Noggett-Tuck River Greenway. So, just by spending money, and with the help of a grant writer, we could receive millions of dollars from the federal and state government to take care of our infrastructure. And the other one is to have a plotter that we're going to share with planning and zoning. And I do come with some jokes and things in between, but with that grant writer, we heard OPM from the federal and state government, but I would also like to carry this other people's money besides water. So, it's a big deal for us. The biggest increases is in highways, and that's with fixing the roads, buying a new snowplow truck, vehicle rehab, we want to take some of our older trucks and put them through a rehab. They're actually, they don't have diesel emission fuel, which is death, and also they don't have all the crazy electronics that break a vehicle off down. And the last one is the construction department replacement. It's a fund that we want to have each and every year. We've had a tough time with street sweeping this year. We put two sweepers out. The oldest one's broken down three times in the past three weeks, and it also doesn't pick up the sand correctly off of the road. So, we don't really have our efficiency with our work crew taking care of our roads after the winter. Some good news, besides developing solutions, putting a shovel in the ground, and is on our solid waste, Watertown has one of the best transfer stations, I say, in state. There's a town to the southwest of us. Our budget is 300,000. We collect 200 in revenue, so it's a $100,000 budget. Town to the southwest is 1.1 million. They collect 100,000, it costs them $1 million. And they have a couple thousand less residents than us. I think it's just the way it was set up, with $20 for your sticker, and also $2 for the smaller bags. And plus, we have a great team, two employees, a full-timer, a part-timer, and we haul our own waste. There's also this one other example, town to the northwest that's adjacent to us, about 5th of our population, and they pay $450,000 a year, collect 100,000 a year, so it's costing them $350,000 for that. Tree Budget is another great budget that we have, but I'm looking for additional $17,000. We don't have a dedicated tree truck or tree crew. It's going to be too costly to buy a $300,000 truck with aerial capability, and also ask them for three additional full timers, or take them out of Hyde, where we're not maintaining the roads. So, this is definitely an insurance policy. It helps with the future storms, lessen the impact. It helps with life safety of the traveling public, and it's a real good deal, both solid waste and this tree budget. Kind of switching hats a little bit, I guess I'm also a superintendent, Superintendent of Water and Sewer, is just a couple of key things. It's an enterprise account, so this doesn't come out of the mill rate. So, this comes out of the rate payers. So, what we fix is what we take in from the rate payers. As you can see, the same general theme, is taking care of that infrastructure and taking care of our customers. And the big thing I have is about redundancy, because you can't have one pump, you need two. We do have 136-inch line that comes into the town. There's some long-term faults, I want to try to make improvements so we can have a secondary source of water into the town. The other part is security, both cyber and physical security. We just recently upgraded our SCADA system, the controls, the computer controls. It was on Windows 7, and we currently, didn't get any updates, and now we have it on Windows 11. But we also want to update our billing system, too. Physical security, gates, cameras, fences around all of our infrastructure. And we do, we have hired a new Assistant Water and Sewer Superintendent, Dave McMahon. He's got 40-plus years in the water and sewer industry. We worked together at the MDC up in Hartford, and he's a great find, and I can't wait for the relief to come into the office. There's one other thing I didn't want to put on the slide, I just briefly discussed, is we also have a pending lawsuit with Waterbury since 2018, and I'll be going to court next week, talking about my favorite thing besides drainage is infrastructure. And basically explaining what we're, what we have and what we maintain ourselves, that we want the full grid, we don't want the individual grid, because we have a great infrastructure. So, getting into water, simple, provide clean water. And you can see the list of major assets that we have, booster pump station, three of them, 67 miles of pipe, 4,300 customers, and two large water storage tanks. The other side of the house, the dirty side, I'll save that other joke I usually say at this time for another time, but collect the sewage and have it flow on. Same thing, same amount of customers, same amount of, different pipe, San Therry Sewer Pipe, and seven sewage pump stations. So, on our capital side of the house, this highlighting a few of them is we need to repaint the floor of the strait tank. We do have an inspection report that we have to get in here with, take it offline, we have to, we have to dry it out, we have to rehab it. The other one is a Carville meter pit. It's just not the $35,000 we've been building money into this account to actually do a new meter pit. And I said, "Where's the Carville meter pit?" And they said, "It's near Carville." So, I said, "Great." And then the other one is emergency water pump to help with the redundancy, moving the flow between our different, we have five different zones within the town. On the sewer side, it's pretty simple. It's not like specific projects, but in the future, I definitely will be coming here for I-9, which is inflow and infiltration and legal connections, because it's going to help with our future development, because we're right at the limit of putting any additional flow into our pipe system, but we could solve it by I-9. These parts are on our sewer operating expenses. The one thing I'd like to highlight is to put additional funding into legal services with the help that we're receiving from a couple of different law firms for the lawsuits that we do have. And also on the water side is additional legal services, and on both sides, the electrical that it takes, the increase for our pump stations, and also for data processing services. We're looking at getting the new billing system, so we could be more stable with our billing for the future. So, that's the highlights. I want to thank you for coming out tonight, and I'll be here also if you have any questions for Public Works or for Water and Sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lukowski. I'd just like to note that our department heads are very passionate about the departments. I'd like to introduce one of our senior department heads, and not me, but this is time.
Do you want to read him?
Lisa Carew, and I assure you, she will be great, because she has a sound map. Lisa Carew, Harrison Gray.
Thank you. This evening, I'm going to be talking about Recreation, Crestro Park, Parks. Jerry's talking. Can you hear it now?
No.
Okay.
We're senior citizens.
Hello. Okay. All right. So, this evening, we're going to be talking about Recreation, Crestro, Parks, Social Services, which is the Food Bank and Fuel Bank, Senior Services, and including the Municipal Agent. So, those are the divisions that fall under the category of Human, Social, and Leisure Services, and the proposed budgets are indicated here. I'm going to go to the next one. Something's up there. All right, Mike? There we go. Okay. So, the expense drivers for this year, it's a quick overview. Can you hear me?
Yeah, just talked right into that mic.
I am going to, thank you. For our Senior Services, I request an Assistant Senior Services Coordinator, and also increase our Plus Services. According to 2000 Census Bureau Census data, our population of 65 and older is at 14.1% with 24.9% ages 45 to 64. Our population is obviously getting older. And we also have an increase in activities and attendance, and so I'm asking for help down at the Senior Center to complement who are gray, who is our coordinator. In our Parks Department, I request one additional labor. There are currently three full-time positions in seasonal health. The Parks Department is responsible to maintain approximately 220.974 acres of property, including our newest park, the Watertown Park Park, which is our dog park. We will have another 19.07 acres coming soon with the connections of the Greenways, and even more with once the Noggett-Tuck River Greenway is gone, and it was touched on a little bit during Jerry's on the court. The Parks also maintains approximately three miles of sidewalks, and they mow it in the summer and they shovel it in the winter. At Crestro Park, the Enterprise Fund, and it was talked about a little bit before in the Water and Sewer Budget, but in ours, the Enterprise Fund is our paid to play, paid participate, whatever you want to call it. The budget expenses include the replacement of the restaurant, which is Sunset Row, and the pro-shop groups. It has not been covered under the town's insurance, they are in its current budget, and hopefully, the insurance company will pick up at least part of it. There's also eight additional golf carts that we're going to be renting this year to increase our fee of 44, so we have during our peak months that we have better services with golf carts. The Enterprise Fund is the Paid Participate Fund. It's January 5. It's January 5th, golf season to operate the course. Beginning in 2010, the fund's longer included the swimming pool, lifeguards, and tennis courts. And this will also be our fourth year to not follow the employee benefits. Up until recently, the golfers paid for a hundred percent of everything within the gates of the park. There are 248.65 acres at Crestwood. For our social services budget, I requested a full-time social worker. This was rejected, and it's not included in the budget. My budget request is actually down $3,746. Eventually, the town will need to consider hiring a full-time social worker to assist the police, health department, board that, and our community with issues that are happening. In the recreation budget, it's also down by $6,954 due to retirement of a long-term, very dedicated employee who retired. In closing, I want to finish by saying my department is 2.39% of the proposed budget you're seeing tonight. If you subtract Enterprise Course at Crestwood Park, it drops it down to 1.43%. I'd like to thank you at this point, I'll be available also for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa Carew. Last presentation will be from the fire attorney chief, David Brown.
I want to thank the common manager, the top contributor, and your diligence in this budget, and hard time to live in one, and no work proven.
And there you have it.
Okay.
You have to stand sideways.
Better?
Yeah.
We are volunteers serving our community since eighteen ninety-four. Current membership is seventy-four, we're allowed into that one hundred and twenty. Seventy-five percent of our nation's firefighters are volunteers. It is estimated that the town went to a full-time department, career department, it would be a cost of six million dollars. Currently, we have two fire stations, one on Main Street, one on Buckingham Street, and a third at their request, as of the new facilities that the, for the senior center places fire with, as our current credit minister of agents and truck companies, which are always ready to respond. Our members are trained extensively analyzing acres in the last year, 2022, members logged over twenty-four hundred fifty hours of volunteer training. This is something that you don't get paid for, but you pay us tuition to take over Public education is our main concern. This is also occurring with our fire marshal's office, with the library event, going into the daycares, preschools, regular schools, pro school every year. We also hold an open house, it's a fire department for fire prevention. And also the fire marshals always does have a smoke detector, and if it doesn't have a smoke detector, it's available at the fire. This is some of our calls that we've been responding on Main Street. Last year, we responded to 2,090 fire progress in EMS calls. An increase of fifty-four incidents during each previous year. I want to thank the town's people for providing that was approved for letter two. This is a thirty-one-year-old truck, which just had been finally signed a contract to get a new one. Unfortunately, it's eight hundred and fifty days away, so this truck is thirty-three, the thirty-four years old, ten inches places. Town currently funds in replacements on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Next to what is our resident tank, which is twenty-five years old, it should identify required to the fire address to replace this twenty-five-year-old age. This truck will be replaced, hopefully, with the limited twenty-six seven year remark, hopefully we get that time, the cost won't go up too much. This is just a breakdown of the highlights of our budget, what it increases and increases. The first line is the administrative assistant in the fire office, the corporate fire chiefs, and the fire marshal's assistant. That is a contractual pay rate, so it went from forty-five to sixty-four to forty-six zero one. Requesting additional money for the deputy chief. He currently has fifteen hours of work a week, and we're requesting him to go to twenty. This will be to facilitate ongoing paperwork, grants, and grants. We're also requesting a twenty thousand dollar increase in voluntary fire program pay. Currently, the fire can get eighty-fifty per call, and they're trying to bump it to ten dollars. Currently, search apartments around us are eighty-fifteen. Currently in our budget, there's a line out approved this year to increase the merchant manager's salary to seven thousand twelve five, an increase in deputy, it can be from zero to two thousand. Increase in post tests to forty-two hundred dollars, fifty-one hundred dollars. Increase of ten thousand dollars, oh, I messed up, a decrease of ten thousand from twenty-two thousand to twelve thousand for medical services. This line out here is for our physicals and firefighters, and we change the way in which we do this, and we fire by now over a hundred and thirty, which is personnel at times. An increase in our presentation public ticket for our vendor control from nine thousand to nine four fifty. Increase for replacement power one, which is a scheduled three-year lease, twenty-five thousand, and a decrease from our two replacement, which is a payoff at zero. The A D B replacement decreased from eighty-nine to three thousand, as that lease was paid off. Two thousand dollar increase for communication equipment from six thousand to four thousand, this is new to our grant money that was from the management of the great communication systems. An increase in medical supplies from ten thousand to twelve thousand. A decrease in uniform to protect the public, this is a holding that would give the firefighters a fire forty-five to forty thousand. This is because we're getting up-to-date now with our equipment. A decrease in special police fire supply from seventeen to fifteen. And a decrease of twenty-five thousand from seventy-eight to fifty-four to fifty-three, five thirty-four. So the overall budget from last year to this year is a decrease of four thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars. Water pump firing services continue to serve the town with water not available, with members putting themselves in harm's way, they respond to fire without a call. A tree resident who's still in testing positive, they're coping with it, you know, they need to, that means you kind of know that the town is in hard time to do the pandemic, and we are now having coverage, so we make assistance for our monies. The town manager was fair review of the current budget, that along with private sorting completed, and the budget presented at SAS for a zero increase plus, we make this, who will make this zero increase budget work for the essence of what we have. Water and Fire March is everybody responding in there.
This concludes our presentations, going to the people, and I just wanted to thank them for their time, as well as the common manager and the superintendent. Now I'd like to invite the public to speak, if they have any comments about the budget. Please report the podium with micro and state your name and address, and we also ask them to keep your comments short.
Good evening. My name is Diane Haggis, I'm with at fifty-three Kill Site Avenue in Oakville. My name is Dr. Diane Haggis, I'm with at fifty-three Kill Site Avenue in Oakville. I've been part of this community for thirty-eight years, owned the home for thirty-eight years, and raised five children in this neighborhood. But they're all grown now, and they're, they have their own families, they're all parents, and none of them live in Warrington. So I am not directly impacted by the amount of money taken out of the school budget, because I don't have any children or grandchildren in our schools. However, I am a very, very strong advocate for education, all education, but particularly the education in my own town. It's expensive, and I know that, because I've been part of education for forty-seven years, as a teacher, as an administrator, as an education consultant in three different states, and it's expensive. I know the, I know the special education is expensive. Although it's subsidized by the federal government, it's very expensive for a tenant, and I understand that. I hope we all recognize that special education, the money spent for that is really not negotiable, because it is state and federal law that we have to provide a free and appropriate public education for every single special ed student, for anyone that has an I P, an individualized education plan. There's actually a statement in the law, a simple declarative sentence in the law that says money, finances cannot be the return factor in the services we provide for special students, because we have to provide the services that they need to be able to access that free and appropriate public education. I understand that, it's expensive. But let's look at education as a whole, the special ed, regular ed, the materials, the books, the technology, the teachers' salaries. We want to recruit and keep good teachers, not mediators, and that costs money. And the money, the money is important, you know, it matters to me about the taxes and increases and so forth. Both my husband and I have retired, it matters to me. But then I say to myself, but what are we putting out there in society? Are we putting out strong, well-educated, independent, strength-based students? Have we provided them with all the tools they need to meet that goal? Or are we kind of skipping on that a little bit, because we spend so much time figuring about the money that we put into education? And if that's true, what does that say about us? What does it say about me and our community? What does it say? What does it say about our values? And what does it say about what we think is important? I do want to think education is important, and I am hoping that the folks in our town, when they go to vote, remember the importance of good education in society today. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lady Shannara, I'm with at seventeen Nielsen Avenue in Mobile, and I'm a member of the Falls Avenue Senior Center. It is my home away from home. I love the place, I love the people there, and Laura, and her staff does an excellent job of keeping it clean, organized, and well-intended. And I want everybody, please, support the senior center. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Joe Frosty, I'm with at forty-nine Jason Avenue in Warrington. I want to start off by just thanking the town of Warrington, Lisa and Laura for all they do for the seniors. We need an assistant for the senior center, activities, new membership, routine duties and trips, all four on Laura's plate, and it is overwhelming for any one person. She has managed to do it in a very long time because of her dedication to the center, but she needs a hand. New members are welcome all the time, plus Laura goes above and beyond for the needs of the senior members. Laura provides a newsletter, plus information sheets for activities for the seniors, both at the center and to share with seniors everywhere. She provides information on fuel, stamp, Q and B, propane, and home repairs to help seniors. These programs help to keep them from losing their homes, help them keep access to food and drugs when finances get tight, and help them stay more all with her. Laura always has an open door house. She is also accommodates appointments for all programs related needs. Seniors can always ask Laura for help on what to do, on anything they need. She travels with the seniors, she programs on the bus, so that they will feel at home and that she is available everywhere for their needs. Laura puts in hours at the senior center and very often works into the late evening hours. She always treats the seniors with respect, she never treats us like. We are children, and is patient with those that don't understand. She is open to suggestions for new programs and to expand on existing programs. Laura personally comes into every activity to ask if everything is okay, if there is any problems. She makes you feel comfortable about letting her know, so she can handle it. She always tells us about the programs, trips, speakers, that are coming up on the calendar, because she understands that seniors may have a tough time remembering things. There are a number of programs that are demanding on her time. These all take time in addition to her duties. Some of them should be split up into an additional position, because it is hard to do these all together with her regular duties. I personally vetted the center past operating hours, and have been there while Laura was working, she needs help. She has a great personality, so she has no problem getting volunteers, but they don't have an expertise in the field. I have never seen a senior so well taken care of in the sixteen years that I have been a member of the senior center. Senior, the senior population is expanding, that is my Lord needs help now. The senior center in the future will be great, however, there is immediate need for help prior to this. Seniors in town have contributed a lot to this town over the course of their lives. Now some of these people only have the senior center to look forward to that a day. It is what keeps them going instead of giving up or settling into depression. It makes them feel alive. In closing, I just want to thank, in closing, I just want to again thank you all for what you have done and continue to do for the seniors of the community. Plus, I would like you to fully support the senior center budget. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Irian Lu Switz. Been at the senior center for five years. Like Betty said, Joe, it's a home away from home. Laura treats us like humans, not like children. She greets us by our first names. I give her a lot of credit. I've been in the hairdressing business over thirty years, and I still can't remember half of my customers' names. She greets us wonderful. And please, support us. We are the baby boomers of Warrington. We're aging, just like you guys, you'll be here someday, some of you are pretty damn close to our age, too, and your parents. You know, we, we need this senior center. We need it, and God bless Laura and everybody, and thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cody Clement. I live at Farco Road One-Five-Nine in Watertown. I am currently a fourth grader at Pollo Elementary School. I am speaking because I want to share my thoughts on the proposed budget cuts. One thing about my school is that it's fun here in Watertown. At my school, we have had fun activities we can do, like the school play, chess club, and band. I participated in it in the school play, and I loved it. It was a fun opportunity to try something new, and I made a lot of new friends. When budgets are cut, things like the school play don't always happen. This year, the Pollo School Library had almost no budget for new books. It can be hard enough to get kids to read a book, but it is even harder when there aren't many new popular books in the school library. If we cut the budgets, are we ever going to get new books? In my classroom, my teacher has lots of fun activities. One of my favorites is when she was just fine to create and present stage slideshows to the class about our favorite things. It's like you learn a business when you present a slideshow. Without that practice, I might not feel comfortable in front of all of you. If the budget gets cut, we might not have updated technology to do slideshows anymore. When budgets are cut, sometimes teachers don't come back. This can make class sizes increase. If that happens, teachers may not be able to do big activities like slideshows. This year, when I was struggling with the vision for there not being enough to be an open group, my teacher was able to work with small groups and help them. And if the class sizes increase, she might not be able to do this anymore. Students, please fully fund the budget so people can keep being fun. Thank you.
I got a follow-up. My name is Mike Murphy. Seventeen Main Street, Oakville. I stand to recommend that we fully fund the town's education budget. Actually, we have a proposal budget that is unharmed similar districts in our area. Completely reasonable, and I was dismayed to see that there were already proposals before you were putting out to a vote to start cutting it. I moved to this district and I have been nothing but thoroughly impressed with the quality of education that's happened in this district. It's been challenging years to get educated, and I have been educated in this district, so I know what it's like. And to see the quality of education that my children have been able to receive in these challenging times and post is phenomenal. And I just have to say, if you've ever interacted with this method, there's somebody who's born to be running up to their school and maybe they want to do it in a career. Anyway, to keep it brief, what makes a school district succeed is the quality of its teachers. And teachers are fueled by the ability to deliver for their students the opportunity to learn, to succeed, and to thrive. And so, when I hear that we're on this tipping point, I don't want to see something so beautiful and so powerful at risk. It's been a tough year, a tough year to get educated. I've had friends move districts because they weren't supportive, but I've also seen people leaving the profession because the environment is becoming challenging. So if we want to maintain the high quality of school district that we have, we need to make sure that we continue to fund it. Before I came up here, I asked my daughters what was the things they liked about school, and the first thing they said was, "Joe Chris." They just wanted to know what they... The second thing that Ada said to me that she liked about school was fractions. Fractions. If we have a school system where the second thing that comes to mind or something you like about school is fractions, we're doing something right. So let's fully fund it and educate. Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. Jeff Demarest, Two-Ninety-Four Needle Drive. Two years ago, I was on the next stage as a member of town council facing a vote to cut our school budget by three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And at the time, I was concerned about the idea that we would be facing further cuts going forward. And here we are with eight hundred thousand dollars on the table and two hundred thousand dollars on the municipal budget. We've heard a lot about Watertown pride. We hear that a lot. But what does pride mean? Is it just a word? Pride is making sure that our schools are properly funded for our kids, for their futures, and making sure the teachers have the tools necessary to be able to teach our children. Pride is making sure that we have enough police officers to cover the safety of our town. Not an increase of one, which is not enough, as the chief pointed out, but the three we need to have. Pride is making sure that our roads are not F-rated, but are really good quality roads for our citizens. We put a lot of money toward the town, and we deserve to have the best that we are paying for. But most important, as I've said, is for our students. We can't continue to kick the can down the road on this. What will next year look like? Will it be a million dollars cut? A year after that, will it be one point two? We've had inflation over the last year that has increased costs across the board on everything. We all know that. We've all felt it ourselves. Our schools need to make sure, we need to make sure our schools are properly funded to make sure our students have an opportunity, when they graduate, to face the future that's ahead of them. It is through education that we will do that. So pride is not making the easy decision for the present, but making the tough decisions for the future. Fund the schools. To the town council, I ask you. Fund our schools, the eight hundred thousand dollars. Fund our police department, what they need. Fund our roads. To the people of Watertown, when it comes to our vote, fund our schools. Fund our town. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sam Paladico. I live at Two-Sixteen Riverside Street in Oakville. I'm a senior at Watertown High School. And I would like to make my argument brief, but I would like to present a very simple fact. This is according to the National Education Association, amongst other sources, that aggregate per pupil spending increases student outcomes in every situation. Every situation. Therefore, I don't think that it would be a wise idea to cut funding to the things that are making our students successful. I think that passing the district education budget at the proposed level of around seven point one percent would be a very good idea.
Hello. I'm Floyd Harris. I live on Two-Ninety-Four Needle Drive, and I'm a junior at Watertown High School. I'm in eighth class, I was at track field, and I'm also in field program. Cutting eight hundred thousand dollars to the school will be detrimental to the children and young adults' learning. Not only will it limit our spending money on new ideas needed in classrooms that are crucial for children and learning, it will also attract less teachers to our school system, and there'll be lessons for extracurriculars like sports and pubs. I would really like everyone to take a moment and really consider in their hearts, if they have Watertown students that may be limited on what will be provided for them and their learning better. These students are the upbringing generation, and we need the best education we can get to be strive our major. We can only get the best education with the budget going to the really big. That's the education. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Joe Mashin. Thirty-three Pleasanton Street, Oakville. I came here tonight not really knowing what to say. Interview?
Put it right up to your mouth.
All right. How about that?
That is.
Really been in troubled times. You never know when you pick up a newspaper with the television as to whether there's another mass shooting, whether there's more crime, captive converters being ripped off, cars being stolen out of garages, when people leave them running in the morning because they want to warm the car up. It's getting horrendous. And I don't think that our current police department has all they need to address the situation. I think the three officers that were proposed are absolutely necessary, and I think the council ought to put them back in the budget. We live in a town, we think we're isolated. That it's not going to happen here. Well, look at Newtown. And you never know. You just don't know what's going to happen. And the only way we can prevent a situation like that from occurring, hopefully, is to have the resources to get it to occur. So I would agree, please, put the three officers back in the budget.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Kellmeyer. I live at Downey Caroline Circle in Oakville. My husband, Robert, only have two children in Watertown School, one at Pollo and one at Swift. I think the hardest lesson that I have learned about finances in my adult life is the difference between a want and a need. A need is something you cannot go without. Needs are the basis of the household budget. We need food. We need water, electricity, and small things like soap and toilet paper. Wants are important too, though. Disney Plus for family movie night, ice cream at Carvel, if we're lucky, a family vacation. The wants make our family rich and vibrant. The school budget is the same. The needless that forms the basis is short of substantial. Special education and teachers' salaries and benefits, our basis may not be enough. It's the same you need, but everything else is replaced in the want column, and that's what's wrong. Programming particular kids like mine is a want? I disagree. Enrichment is a want? No, it's a need. Every single thing that doctors need this budgeting for is a need because this town needs a vibrant school system. Students need to be rich with experiences. Nothing involving the education of our children should ever be a want. We need it. So I'm saying that we should send the budget as it was, the eight hundred thousand, to the voters. Let the voters show the town that the children need their support. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Michelle Young. Three-Sixty-Eight Amherst Avenue. I am a student at Split Mill School. Thank you, Dr. Villanueva, and all the hundreds done on the budget for our schools. Louder? Sorry. I'm in support of the budget in its entirety, as it was presented. I'm not going to waste time repeating everything that was in the budget. It's very concise. What I did want to do is offer a different perspective. When I moved to Watertown six, almost seven years ago now, I was a homeschool parent. And I homeschooled in my previous town due to the lack of what I saw in the school district before we came back. Now, we entered my daughter into school at Judson in third grade, and the experience was phenomenal. It has continued to be phenomenal. The staff and the administration are outstanding, and my experience at the Mill School so far is insane. What I will say is that I'm still greatly tied to the homeschool community, and it's a huge network throughout the entire state. And one of the main reasons that people homeschool is due to the lack of support in special education. Most of the homeschooling families I know were once in school and their children are cold due to the lack of support that they have in special education. I have numerous friends who struggle with the choice of staying home or paying for private education. We were fortunate that that wasn't one of our struggles. Sorry, let me get my notes here. As we see from the reports that were given by Dr. Villanueva, the numbers are increasing, so I don't know how that's going to get better if we don't fund what's proposed. And the second note from my perspective is, someone touched upon this before, but I grew up in Newtown, and I raised my oldest child there. He was a Sandy Hope student. And part of the budget in front of him is reinstating security officers. I can't think of anything more important than having that stay called reinstated. Just, it may not be the perfect solution, but to help avoid some of the fears and the real risk, I feel that's absolutely important. People leave districts when they're not tied to a school system. I wasn't tied to the school system in my last town. I didn't feel connected. I didn't feel anything to stay. Now, my daughter's in school here. We don't want to leave until she graduates high school. And if that, so if you want people to stay, make the schools a place where people want to be, and your community strive, your connectedness to those schools. So thank you for your time, and thanks.
Lili, I say from my inner flat, I reflect on the past and why I chose Water and children. When I moved into the town after nineteen ninety-nine, John Trump was just a thought, and then began breaking ground. Now, twenty-two years later, I've had two children go through and graduate from our school system. Both are in colleges, writing, and put the education they received here in Watertown. And happily forget it, with over a year of virtual schooling, I have another now that's coming up through Swift and Mill School. One of my children, living in college, wants to come back and teach at his high school. That is his dream, is to walk back and hear these words and give back. He wants to help make a difference in his town, and he has spoken at his podium several times on a budget and knows his struggle. But you know what? I'm tired. I'm tired of this site every single year. I don't want to come up here and explain why our schools need money. You already know that. I don't want to come here and explain why our teachers have to buy their own supplies or have to Amazon wish lists, because you already know that. And I don't want to come here and explain why our PTOs have to consistently fundraise and help offset our costs to our children and our families, because you already know that too. So I'm going to take my time to say thank you. Thank you to the Board of Education, who volunteered to my position to their community. They will tirelessly make changes to the crew of the best teachers to your children and mine. Thank you to Superintendents and our business manager. They and many of their predecessors have lost countless hours of sleep trying to create a budget that is responsible, and then lose their sleep when their budget is cut time and time again. Thank you to the town manager, who is working hard to hear his community as well as helping develop that timeline. And of course, the town council, because as I was saying, one most referent. Their job is just as tough because they care for both sides and all of the community. But yet sometimes I feel our community is not understanding why. Why do we have to use our budget every year? What are terms like NPR and funded state mandates? There is no way I have enough time to explain what my annual insane amount on funded mandates are from the state of Connecticut. But suffice it to say, they drive out the costs incredibly. Basically, your state can look at you and say, "You must take this, but we're not going to help you," so figure out the whole town. Figure out how you're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for transportation, special education, or curricula, because we're telling you you have to. Figure out how you will do it with the basic possibility of skyrocketing. Figure out how you're going to do it while attracting new families to this town, keeping your town as one of your curriculums at one stand, and of course, not driving out our senior citizens or the backlogs to our community. We hear that we spend too much on education, but however, basically, the existing reimbursement rate is finally capped, municipality... We hear that we spend too much on education, but however, basically, existing reimbursement rate of funding caps municipality bill number sixty percent of special education costs that are increasing at a rate of five to six percent a year, to my opinion, is a very low estimate. And the term NPR, basically, is just saying we can't have a budget. We can't spend as much as we did this year. Can we ask for a little or an increase? Of course we can. But let's look at our spending. Let's look at our electric or gas bill of twenty twenty and then look at it now, three years later. The change is incredible. The cost of a ring of paper in twenty twenty was three dollars and fifty-nine cents. I ordered them for a ceiling light I worked in back then. I ordered tons of them. A ring has five hundred pieces of paper in it. Today, there's seven ninety-nine a ring for the same five hundred sheets of paper. Over a one hundred percent cost increase. Anybody want to guess how many years of paper a school will store? My point is just simply that nothing can come down and stay the same. So why would we expect an education or town budget to go down or stay the same? Please know that your Town Council and Manager, Board of Education Superintendent have worked hard. They've lost countless hours of sleep. But they're here for you. My ask is this. Let the budget go where it's written as it is, as it was presented by every single Watertown manager. Let your town pan out and use their voice. We have no more band-aids. We have no more pixie dust. Please don't start us down the path of cutting our taxes before we even have the chance to vote. Our budget cuts at the back of the list is the best we can do and they deserve better.
Excuse me, miss. Can I get your name and address for the record?
Oh, sorry.
Smith and Davidson, Oakville, Oklahoma, New York.
Thank you.
Alvin, ninety-five, in the nine hour. Last year for the budget, I just remember I said, "The budget is flawed." And I think it's flawed by all sorts. I don't think they should cut anything from the budget. I think the budget should go forward without the last million dollar covenant. And they should go with the people to get their goals to support the full budget as was discussed earlier, the full million dollar cuts. There could be an argument that, "Why send it out when it's going to be torn down?" Well, it costs ten thousand dollars to run a referendum. But they cut many dollars out of the budget. I think it's worth the money to find out what the town really wants. The council is worried about the seniors as a core entity. I'm sorry, the seniors are here supporting the budget. The children are here supporting the budget. I hope that the council can put the money back in and have the people decide what they want. Thank you. My last thing. I'd always said a three policeman, however, fine.
My name is Ed Parkes for Wood Lake Terrace, Oakville. I have four questions to discuss shortly, so I want to keep that one up. Uh, one is that the senior population... I'm sorry. The se- this is... Okay, the senior population is growing. They improve now the seniors. We are in a larger percentage of seniors now all the time. So, larger percentage of the population is paying taxes, but the lack of supporting the school system. Remember, that's fifty percent of the budget in town is for the town, but this is for the school system. So, we are craving of supporting the seniors. We have a senior center that is, uh, well, I went there when it was a three grade, uh, school with three grades in two rooms. Okay, that's now our senior center. It's a small building. I was there in the park about, in the senior bus, uh, just this week. There was no room left in the bus to turn around. There's no space. Those are old cars. Okay, they are the, okay, a senior center. That is one thing. Uh, the second thing I want to discuss is the ratio of, I'm, I'm a mathematician, I'm sorry, an engineer, an engineer is a law, like, by requirement, mathematicians. Uh, the ratio attached to paid by seniors in towns is, um, quite heavy. So heavy in the favor of, um, taxes versus benefits. It does to the point where we have control of this right now. Uh, the seniors pay taxes and those supplying children. They have to pay for the school part. So we're paying this proportionate amount of money for the, um, school system portion of our town tax. But we're paying for the whole thing. Not very fair. So, the seniors are looking for something. They're looking for something that's, uh, they earned. I don't want to make this very long, so, uh, the cost per pupil in Watertown is the order of, um, two thousand dollars probably. I believe that's a correct number. Nineteen hundred, I saw a mile ago, total group. Uh, the money doesn't be spent for seniors. It's a stretch. So, I'm hoping to see that our senior demographic continues and they get a senior center every year very much. Because by the point I'm trying to pay is that, please remember, seniors vote. They're a bigger population of our town consequently. Support the seniors.
Catherine P. Amor, thirty-one, Cottage Place, Oakville. I plan to support the Board of Education budget and I was appalled at the county's request for an eight hundred thousand dollar reduction. We've only got two hundred thousand dollar reduction on the town side. I think those numbers should have been reversed. It's a quality, the way the students who are being educated are treated by our government. We should be doing everything we can to give students not just excellent education, but an exceptional learning experience. But I'm not going to support the town budget for a number of reasons. And I want to start by saying that I see a lot of people here tonight that I never see at Town Council meetings. And I don't keep the weeds unpaid when I'm making my decisions. So a lot of you come here tonight and you think, "Yeah, Tommy, great, we need to support these budgets." But I don't think you have any idea how little money is being spent now and has been being spent. I'm going to start by just saying that, um, the town side is supposed to cut two hundred thousand dollars for the budget. They cut two hundred and nineteen thousand, but then added back in nineteen. So, they, uh, took a cut, they shifted money. The manager was not asked to shift numbers, but to cut, to just cut. Now, I was attending meetings where we were being told everything, what was going to be, um, budgeted. And then to cut two hundred, two hundred thousand, but to cut two hundred and nineteen and put back in nineteen in a different place, that's not transparent to me. Now, I'm visiting here tonight. It sounds like the seniors are very happy with the senior center. But I don't think you know or are paying attention to the fact that the senior center's budget has grown almost a hundred thousand dollars in the last two years. So, we're spending a lot more money for the senior center. And something I don't understand is that for this budget, the, um, activities fund for the senior center is almost doubled. It's up to ten thousand dollars. But for the, um, recreation department, it's only seventy-five hundred. And when you look at the amount of people in the senior center and the amount of people for the recreation side, that's lopsided. And we're not getting any reasoning behind it. So I have a problem with that. I have a problem with seniors. But I need an explanation on how the recreation department's activity fund is less than the senior center. It seems lopsided to me. I also don't think that a lot of people know that in the month of March, we paid several employees to sit home on suspension. And this has been a problem with everything. Now, I don't think that that's fair to taxpayers. If you can't figure out, management's having a problem with employees, you should not suspend them and have them sit home on time. It's happened many times in the last year. There's also raises for certain people far exceeding the usual four percent, up to seventeen percent. Management negotiates, negotiates those increases and improves them. But we're always being told that there's some sort of strict contract that we must adhere to. We didn't see increases of up to ten thousand dollars for one employee with the last week. The raises are out of control and the council is turning a blind eye to this, what's going on here. And let's not forget about all the consultants we've been paying in the last two years. Why are we paying consultants to tell our management what, how they need to do their job? Shouldn't we be hiring people who know how to do their job? But yet every time we turn around, we're paying fees for consultants. And I'm sorry, but I don't think we need a third fire department, another department to maintain. We need a refurbished or renovated or renewed police department. That's what's been on the table that suddenly disappeared and now we're hearing that we need another fire department. I mean, can we figure out what we really need here and get the money in the right places? Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that might come forward?
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? I'm Cheryl Albino. I live at three forty-six Georgetown, Rhode Island, Watertown. I've been a resident since about nineteen ninety-four and I'm a homeowner since nineteen ninety-eight. I'm a former board of events and I'm here to discuss the reduction of eight hundred thousand dollars to our school budget. Uh, Watertown's school district is heavily underfunded if you compare it to other districts in the state of Connecticut. It's a fact in the long run. Uh, we're going to fall behind further if we don't provide top-notch education for students. Right now, we have two obsolete computer labs. Curriculum needs to be updated continuously to stay abreast of, um, everything that's going on in the world. Our infrastructure needs to be maintained to extend the life of the buildings and the properties. Our special needs are rising at a dramatic rate. And I don't see funding to support the growing mental health challenges that our students are currently facing post, excuse me, post-Pandmas. So various behavioral concerns are increasing. And anxiety and depression are afflicting our students post-Pandmas. Our students need whole child support. Students also need experiences when they're at school. It helps them to grow. Our enrichment programs, such as the Watertown High School National Theater, it is completely self-funded. Parents and students that are involved in this program work very hard throughout the school year to raise the funds needed to create the amazing plays and the amazing musicals that our community and our children, uh, we get to enjoy those. And we get to see children and students come alive on stage that were shy once before, were scared to talk to somebody or, you know, just express themselves. It's, it's something that helps to grow into really amazing individuals, myself included. And Watertown High School Theater has earned numerous halo awards over the years. And if you haven't come to see our students, you need to. They are amazing. There's something to be said about offline programs. And I heard tonight, and I'm not quite exactly sure what's going on with the pay per play if the eight hundred thousand dollars goes through. But what I'm taking on that is that if the family max is, if the family cap is, um, put through, so many students will not be able to afford to play sport. No sport means kids are on the street. Kids on the street means trouble in our town. Kids need sports to help them grow. Kids need, kids need sports to learn how to work together. Um, you know, in business, you work on teams. You work solo. You need to learn how to work with people of all status, all races, all everything. It needs to know how to work with people, period, and communicate with others effectively. Sports helps kids do that. It also provides exercise. Um, it just, there's so many benefits of sports. So I, I hope that we don't have to do that because many families are struggling and if they have two or more children, their children may not be able to play sports going forward in that generation. I did hear Dr. Villanueva say that the freshman programming would be eliminated. There is a program for freshmen called the Summer Bridge. My son participated in it. If that is eliminated, it'll be very sad. The Summer Bridge is a program where, uh, freshmen come in two weeks before school. It's a one-week program. The leading crew comes in and they work with the students and they do, you know, icebreakers, show them around the school, make them comfortable. So that their first day of school, actually no stress. They walk in, they've seen some of the kids, they've gotten to meet new students and it eliminates a lot, I'm not going to say everybody, it eliminates a lot of stress with managed students. And that is a really great program and I really hope that doesn't get caught up. Um, there's other freshman programs as well, but that one really stood out to me as an amazing program that would be very set as one going forward in our community. But we do need more programs to support the growing population of students. We don't want to go to college in our town. Remember, a lot of them have. Many students are struggling academically, socially, and emotionally. We know that post-COVID, you know, even adults are struggling. And, uh, we, we need to put proper, um, programs and emotional and social supports in place to help our students, uh, going forward. Gaming, social media, isolation, depression, mass shootings, mental health challenges. There's so many things. The list continues to grow. Uh, and our students have so much to deal with, more than you or I have ever had to deal with when we were at school and growing up. And it's just going to continue getting worse now with AI. You know, technology is really, um, I guess we've been having in raising children. And it's a shame that there's no support in place legally at the federal level to help parents control that. We need to invest our students. It's bound. The phrase, "That it takes a village," has never helped more meaning to me. Think about that. It takes a village to raise well-grounded, morally sound, conscious, educated, compassionate, empathetic humans who can critically problem-solve complex issues, communicate effectively with everybody, manage their emotions, and have resilience when something goes wrong so that they can come through and be successful. That's what we want. We want successful students. We don't want people falling behind. Okay? And that's something we want in our town. So this isn't about me. It's not about you. It's about us. We're a community. We have to be there for our students. All of us need to be there for our students. Whether you're a parent, a grandparent, aunt, uncle, resident, neighbor, whoever you are. Our students, our children, in our town, need us now or never. And that's that. So, you know, in order to create positive cultures, we need programs. In order to create a community, we need programs. Our kids need us. They need help. It's, it's a tough time to be growing up as a teen and as a child, losing two years of your life. We need to help them get back and touch up. We can't take away. We need to provide them more to help them grow into the people we want them to be. Um, we want a top school district. I'm sure everybody needs one. We want a top school district. We want a strong vision. We want a, uh... We want a unified community. So education is where it starts. Educated students equal safer communities. And that's a fact in my mind, okay, that's true. Who doesn't want to live in a safer community? Hands, do you not want to live in a safer community? I think we all want that, right? So as a realtor, I can confirm that families look online and they look to see how towns are rated. We give it back. You look at each. Watertown schools are rated A minus right now. And why is it rated A C plus in our town? Scary. Greatschools.org rates Watertown High School eight-four out of ten right now. I want to see that become eight or nine or ten out of ten. So home buyers consider many facts, but the main determining factor is usually the school district. And that's true if you want to look at that. It's true. They look to see what the school district is doing for the students. And I know my son's not working class, so I don't, I don't know all the mothers, but I think about the students deciding whether different schools have to be rated. We need to retain our students. Fifty students to me in a year is a lot of students to lose to other schools out of the town. Many home buyers will be willing to pay more for quality schools. Top-rated schools command higher real estate values, attract families who will pay a portion of the tax base in town. Residents without children also consider school quality important. They know the overall value for real estate for future real estate sales purposes. So I ask you, do we want to be a mediocre town? Or do we want to be a town with highly-desired schools that are attracting families to come and pay some of the tax base to take away things used? Families will pay more for better education. Investors will buy homes and invest in our town to rent with the desired school districts. And somebody already stated this, the taxes are never going to remain steady. It's always going to increase. And that's what we do. With the way that the current system is set up and the way that economy is going forward right now, which is just a fact. So do we want a higher, safer standard of living in our town? I know I do. That starts with the school district. Our town has us providing seniors with discounts for years, and I'm glad to hear that that's possibly on the agenda. And I do support that. My mom's a senior here in town. I support the senior center. And I hope that we could help the seniors with some discounts because they're, they have a fixed income, and I totally understand that. So I do feel that we do need to look into that as well. And I will leave you with a quote. Those who have the privilege to know have the duty to act. And that was said by Albert Einstein. Invest in Watertown students and please keep the budget as the Board of Education proposed and let the residents decide. Thank you for your attention.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the town council's farm budget? Is there anyone from the town council that would like to make any comments related to the budget? Oh, we did receive five emails related to comments, um, town budget. Mary and I will look through those and read those quickly. To whom I may concern, I support the budget moving forward as it is. Please do not make the eight hundred thousand dollar cut. Thank you for your support.
This email is from a parent of two children that attend John Trumbull Primary School in town. I support the budget moving forward as it is. Please do not make the eight hundred thousand dollar cut. The schools and teachers are struggling so much as it is. I see firsthand what it does and how it impacts our struggling schools. Thank you, Allison. True.
It was an email from Deanna. What's it gonna take for you to understand the rising cost of education? Do you not care? Maybe you know it as only one of you have a child in the school system, but at one point, some of you did. Do you care then? What are supposed to be a community, yet you're not looking out for the community as a whole? You're looking out for a select group. Times are tough. They're all, but we all possess basic knowledge that without education, there is no future. You're not doing right by us. Let the school budget go to all the residents and see what happens. Act.
This email is from Sarah Steinex. To whom I may concern, I'm writing to the town council upon hearing of the proposed budget cuts to Dr. Villanueva's proposed board of education budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I am writing to act we oppose the additional cuts to the funding that our town schools desperately need to ensure quality services and education. When my husband and I chose to relocate to Watertown ten years ago, a large part of our decision was the quality of our public schools. Now, all these years later, our son is a thriving John Trumbull Primary student, and we are proud community members. The idea of cutting the budget by eight hundred thousand dollars before putting the budget out for public referendum is a true detriment to the families of our community, the children of the future of our town, our society, and our world. Additionally, after last year's significant budget cuts to our town schools, the idea of making any further cuts this year compromises the integrity of our town's educational system. The superintendent's proposed budget incorporates several necessary items that will serve to improve education for all students. With the increasing awareness around the science of reading and the state mandates regarding reading curriculum, it's imperative for our K-8 schools to improve their language arts curriculum. Our special education population deserves teachers who have enough time to meet their individualized needs. Our building needs need to be safe and well-maintained for our students. Our school resource officers deserve to be fairly compensated for their efforts in watching over our children. Our children deserve access to the technology that will help them succeed. These items are in the budget for a reason. Lastly, as a public school educator myself, I know the true cost and sacrifice a school personnel pays on a daily basis for the enrichment of our children. We need to show our support to the school community and listen to what the experts have deemed important for the betterment of our children's education. Please reconsider the proposed budget cuts. Let the people of our town decide where their priorities fall in regards to Dr. Vila's proposed budget before putting it on the chart. Thank you for your consideration.
An email from Robert McCosby, fifty-three, Cutler, Knottville. Dear Town Council, it has been important that you have chosen to cut the Board of Education budget by eight hundred thousand dollars before you have heard from a single constituent in the public forum. Why? What information do you hear from members of the Board of Directors or Dr. Villanueva that compelled you to initiate such a drastic cut? Board of Education historically has been, well, tested, prudent with taxpayer funds. Our schools are operated on used public loan and duct tape. The same challenges continue to play Watertown Public Schools year after year, and most of them are the result of unfunded mandates from the state of Connecticut. The continued increases of special education services needed within our district and the associated costs. The failure of Connecticut General Assembly to address the excess cost grant calculation methodology and properly fund the special education. But the state of Connecticut is finding arbitration a state which has a direct impact on contract negotiations and outcomes. But the recruitment and retention of qualified staff and administrators comes at a cost. Pool candidates continues to shrink as more and more people leave the education profession. The Board of Education understands that times are tough for just about everyone. Inflation is still high. Gas prices are still high. Utilities continue to rise. Taxes continue to rise. But at the end of the day, the town council as a whole has demonstrated that it is not willing to partner with the Board of Education. There is no collaboration. There is no desire for it to be part of the solution. Rather, it demonstrates that the council is willing to simply pile on the challenges faced by Watertown Public Schools, which at the end of the day has a negative impact on our children. I urge you to reinstate the original request of budget and let the people decide. Our children deserve more than the bare minimum, and Watertown Public Schools have been fighting for more than the bare minimum for more than a decade. The more the town council kicks him down the road for proper funding, the harder it gets. Lastly, I request that any and all votes taken to send the budget to referendum be done by a roll call so that the people of Watertown and all of you have a clear line of sight into who voted and who not. Thank you. Robert McCosby. Would anyone from the Board of Ed, like to make any closing comments?
Good evening to Mr. Raymon Town House members, to the public. My name is Elizabeth Lawton. I'm a member of the Board of Education, but also stand here tonight as a parent and a frustrated parent. Evidence tells us that our schools are intricately tied to education and health outcomes for our students, but also that schools significantly influence the future economic health and well-being of our community. Our schools are the first line in meeting the needs of our community as a whole and can offer us the biggest return on our investment. As it stands now, there has been an eight hundred thousand dollar reduction to the Board of Education budget. With the combined proposed Board of Education and individual budget cuts, that would reduce the increase in mil rate by approximately half a mil rate over the past year. For the average taxpayer, my math, that's a difference of, what could be less than two hundred dollars per year. At the current cost of pizza, that's less than one pizza per month. I'm sensitive to the fact that that can be a big ask. I am a single mother of four children, all either in district or recently graduating from district, and I've been there. But I also understand that there is a much bigger picture in play. While we're all dealing with the current economy, cutting from our schools will have devastating effects. Again, we all want to make sure that our tax dollars are spent responsibly, and those coming from a corporate background may feel that eight hundred thousand dollars, there must be fluff somewhere that we can cut to make up for it. But I'm sure that as our business manager, I can reiterate, there is no fluff in this budget. Dr. Villanueva has worked diligently in accordance with our strategic plan and has developed this zero-based budget following months of input from each school and department, prioritizing needs and working towards the ultimate goal of reducing costs by capturing outsourced and out-placed services while also being mindful to provide up-to-date curriculum and technology to students. And ever mindful of the unfunded mandates that continue to come from the federal and state level without associated funding. Tonight goes beyond frustration. We're at a tipping point in public education, and as a prior commenter noted, we are tired. We're tired as parents, coming up here and begging for our fellow residents to see the bigger picture with us and try to explain that we know there's no fluff because we're getting the annual list of required supplies to send to school with our children to supply for the classroom. Our educators are tired. They're tired of relying on Amazon wishlist and money out of their own pockets to supply their classrooms. They're tired of showing up to these hearings and wondering if they will have a job next year and wondering how many more students they may need to creatively support in their classrooms because of budget cuts. They're tired of during budget freezes, sending emails and asking for art room supplies, recess supplies, boasts, because that is what is happening. Our kids are tired. They're tired of the message that they're not our priority. They're tired of having to make their own opportunities for the experiences that will prepare them for the world outside of our schools. Theater was mentioned, which by the way is also the extracurricular with the highest participation here in the high school and also doesn't get funded. The Warrior Wire, which is the Watertown High School student-led newspaper, is also funded solely by student fundraising in order for it to go to print. Our students are paying to print their own newspapers here in the school. They're our community leaders, and again, evidence shows us that that is where the investment is in our community. I was not born in Connecticut. None of my family is from Connecticut. When presented thirty-five years ago with an employment opportunity in the state, my parents looked all around the surrounding area and chose Watertown as a place to put down roots because of the stellar educational opportunity. We want that to continue to be the same thing. Reductions may save a half a mil right now, but what about the big picture? If we undermine the efficacy of our school system, we could damage the value of our tax base moving forward. Families like mine, all those years ago, may not look at Watertown as a place to invest in, to put down roots, to start businesses, to grow businesses, and to raise our future leaders. That is not productive. My ask tonight from the town council is that we reconsider the reductions and restore the original ask with that eight hundred thousand dollars. We're all here to work for the better of our community, so let's get the work done.
Someone else from the Town Council?
I guess the first thing that I want to make sure everyone understands is that there be no decisions made this evening. Exactly. We will be considering the budget numbers to send to referendum on Monday at a council meeting, just so that we know that. The eight hundred thousand dollar cut to the Board of Education, I cannot believe was made because we didn't understand the needs of the school system. I can speak for myself personally. I worked in the school system for ten years. I worked with the special education teachers. I typed up the individual education plans. I understand those costs and those needs. And then I served on the Board of Education and on the Budget Committee for sixteen years. So I support education. My children went through the public schools. I'm a senior and I live on Social Security. Do I support the senior center and their needs? Yes, I do. Do I support the fire department? Yes. They responded to my house numerous times because my son has a bad heart. The police department responded to my home when our car was stolen. So every facet of this community, I've been involved with and I support strongly. But that doesn't mean that there aren't, there aren't times when there's hard decisions. And we made one at a council meeting to make some cuts. Tonight, we've heard everything you have to say, and we know that all of your comments are meaningful and momentous. And we believe everything that's in our budget on the town side. And we understand and support and believe everything that's on the school side. It comes down to can we afford it? That's the bottom line. And maybe the people should make the decision.
I just want to, once again, thank the town managers, Superintendent, all the department heads that presented this evening. But more importantly, I do want to thank the public that came out to speak and give their opinion and their comments on the budget. Last year, at the same time, we're sitting on the stage, we had three people from the public come up and have comments on the budget. Tonight, we had close to twenty people. And I think the more the public participates... And I think the more the public participates, the better off that we are hearing the comments from the public. Both now with the budget, but also throughout the year, it is at least very important to me and it's very important to the town council as a whole. Seeing no one else with comments? Say that word, Mike.
I'll speak to the board of ed.
Sure.
Good evening, my name is John Wallace and I'm a member of the Board of Education. We all agree that in order to provide a quality education to our students, we must give our administrators and teachers the resources they need to do the job that we expect them to do. This requires the superintendent to carefully construct an operating budget, which lays out with full transparency every expenditure needed to accomplish this task. I believe she has done that. I also believe she has recognized that one of the problems with our order of the law, which can only get worse if we do not take steps to begin to remedy. I believe the superintendent has made a very strong case for the needs of Watertown Public Schools. She also made it very clear, this is a zero-based budget based on need. I cannot emphasize strongly enough, there is no hidden money in the Watertown Board of Education budget. The final request is essential to memorial district forward. And I also recognize the position on colleagues on the town council of Facebook with respect to the feelings of taxpayers and the ability of a tax increase. However, we hold a whole hearing tonight, we gave the people the opportunity to speak. And from what I'm seeing, there are voices waiting to announce in supporting Board of Education's budget as the superintendent put forward before the cuts. It's time now to let the taxpayers make a final decision. If the $800,000 cut is wanting to stand, it's entitled. It will be devastating to the superintendent's plan to keep this district moving forward. We need to restore the plans, we need to send it to our referendum, and let the appeal of the final say.